Acknowledgement. Would anybody like to start a sobbed by?
In that or responding it from memory?
I'll read it if you want.
Thanks.
We'd like to acknowledge that we are the additional land of a rich and diverse group of native peoples. Who have called this area home for more than 10,000 years. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the descendants of these native peoples who are still here today. In doing this, we aim to illuminate the longer history of this land we call home. Our relationship through the history and the heritage of those peoples whose ancestors lived here before the European American immigration that began in 18.
Thank you. Put somebody to move our agenda in.
I moved.
A second. Right, so it's big time. It's Melissa.
Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the agenda as published, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're a full house, yay. And thank you, Lois, for sharing last month. Okay, so our agenda is approved. What about meeting minutes? Can everyone have a chance? Through the meeting minutes from last month? Yeah, would somebody bring up the table? With a motion? And with the word of the minutes? Thanks, Ash. Can I get a second?
Sure.
Thanks, Ira. Are there any, is there any discussion or? Comment? On those minutes? I wasn't here, but I thought they read very well. They reflected your conversation. Okay, seeing no discussion, all those in favor of approving the minutes? As published, please say aye.
Aye.
Thanks for it opposed. Seeing then that passes and we are right on to our next meeting date, which is February 14. Are there any particular issues given the day that? I have to say that I'm not super keen on it, but. Well.
I will be out of town, but I could call in.
Yeah.
Aren't we supposed to get cards or flowers or something on that day?
No, I just, it feels really weird. I know my husband has plans for us and so we don't have to reschedule on my account, but I can say I won't be able to come because we do have. Which doesn't feel like anything I want to apologize for, but.
I don't mind rescheduling. I'm okay with rescheduling if you want to.
Why don't we just do that?
Okay.
So for the, maybe the third week?
Um, well, and, and I should, there's a caveat to that. I should say, thank you for being willing to re-schedule. I'm going to be out of town. Somewhat we're enjoying our presenting at a conference following Tuesday, so.
You went.
I'm out.
You didn't need to move it forward for me.
Oh, right.
That will be my last one.
Uh, would we be ready at one to do it the Tuesday before or, or, and or does that work for everyone here?
It works, I mean.
Yep.
Does that work?
That might be the climate action.
Well, we can just look at that. You know, and see. Wednesday works, I mean, council and you see, you know, that Thursday night. So like, you see if there's three.
Amber's statute.
Yes, and at this point, obviously a problem. Maybe on the seventh or eighth. I'm going to be out of town. Later that week. So, so this was for me. Seeing about that right then.
Okay, so are we thinking that Tuesday before or the seventh on my calendar?
It works for me.
Seven, does that work? And then the climate action?
If there's a conflict and other meeting, another board meeting, we'll try. Wednesday possibly. So I'll let you know.
Okay. Okay, super. Thank you. Excellent. I hope everybody gets this one. Thanks. Oh, all right. Next up, citizen comments. Is there anyone online, Nick, or anyone in the room that would like to comment?
Here we go.
But those of you that are online, if you would like to comment at the front end of our meeting, please raise your hands. This is the second person. Oh, yeah.
Okay, hello, sorry. I'm late. I'm Lea Nelson. I spoke with you in the email. Steve about their joining up. Like the planning commission. I've been here. I wanted to say hello and I'll try to round up quickly. But I've worked for local government for many years, the city of Seattle. Okay, Office of Housing and then Department of Transportation and Communications.
Lea, yes, Lea. Thanks, Lea. Lea, is that? Lea Nelson. Right. Is she going to interview them part of it?
She was checking it out. Coming to see, the mayor has to nominate anybody.
Okay.
His decisions we have coming.
Okay.
So material submitted and here to.
See what worked out, yeah.
Yeah, and see if people are working if they don't have to go.
Right, so.
Not seeing any hands raised from.
Uh, yeah, so we have two. He just said we have two decisions and we're submitting applications right now.
Next month is my last. Counting yours as a picture. Have you talked about it? Okay.
Okay, great. So are there any hands up online?
Yeah.
All right, and nobody here wants to make a comment? Okay, I will move us on to you, Councilmember Bodie, for a council update.
Thank you very much. I hope you can hear me. I'm out of town and my internet connection is unstable. But luckily, I don't have much of anything to say, except that I have checked with Steve to. Understand when the previous council recommendations for the sign ordinance and the reasonable use exemption. Updates have, uh, will come before the council for discussion and it looks like sometime in February. So it's coming up. I keep saying that. I keep saying it's coming up. Uh, but we had certainly a lot of end of year business, so now. I expect that there'll be council discussion and ultimately, uh, adoption of changes, uh, reflecting. Some or all of your recommendations. So nothing else. The council's just getting started for. For the time going forward, the year ahead, and I hope to stay your liaison for, for now. So we, we actually are making a council decision on that on Thursday, but that is my, my hope and expectation. That's it.
Uh, Councilmember Bodie, would it be helpful for any of us to be at the meeting? That has the RUEs and sign code recommendations on the agenda?
Yes, we, I have always anticipated that one or two representatives from the planning commission. Would come and present that. It wouldn't be just Steve presenting it, but you would be representing your work or another member of the planning commission would. So that is my, my expectation of how that would, how that would go. And then you're there to answer any questions, which is very helpful. So, so that's, I think, once we have the dates. Uh, the planning commissioners can figure out how they want to best be represented. And if you, Madam Chair, want to make the presentation or someone else.
Thank you very much. Okay, maybe at the end of this meeting, if any of you would be interested in participating in that council meeting, would you just let me know your interest at the end of this meeting? And then I'll reach out directly to you. When it comes on the agenda, I'll put you about.
And I'm going to turn off my camera because every once in a while, the, the audio breaks up and I like to be able to hear everything. So, uh, sorry, my internet connection's unstable.
It, it's been great for us here. Did anybody have any questions of Councilmember Bodie before? We move on. I just want to thank you for all the time. I, it just really hit me how, how your time, the volunteer time that you put into this, so thank you. Just ask how long is she?
Well, you know, city council is a paid position, but I appreciate it because if you add it up into an hourly rate, it doesn't turn out to be very much. So thank you for that very nice comment.
Okay, thank you so much, Councilmember. Uh, all right, that takes us directly into old business. And what I heard you say at the end of last month's meeting was that we would tackle the transportation. Um, and economic components of. The comprehensive plan and then are, as far as. Insult scope of work, was that just a special item here or was that an FYI?
Well, um, I, that's really the most important piece that we have of the agenda. So I was thinking, we kind of. Just to see what kind of thoughts came out of the, related to these two elements that we talked about reviewing. If you've had a chance to look at these, these other plans, um, you know, maybe that generates questions. So, um, you know, I, I think we can just kind of try and address anything that came up for you in your review. And not spend a whole lot of time just kind of walking through it, but. You know, the, we could just start with, um, the regarding transportation. We did do a lot of work since the last comprehensive plan update, probably fifteen. But the safe street studies, safe highway studies. The, the, that's basically almost the last one. In your, um, your, uh, plan. There's a screen.
So are you saying you want to start with those two elements and then go to the?
Yeah, just, just see if, if anybody has any question, but just, you know, as a way of introduction. Um, just kind of talk about what, what's in the transportation element here. And, uh. So.
I just have one question, and it's on page eighty-six. For the transportation and it's the transportation benefit district funds. What are those?
Of the, um.
So it's giving like a roadmap, a roadway function classification map, but. And then there's a mention here, minor arterio eligible for transportation benefit district funds.
Yeah, so it's, it's like a, you know, special fund that, that the council has the ability to levy some taxes for. The, the benefit district fund. I'm not sure about the exact financial ins and outs of it, but. You know, essentially the, the council kind of becomes a transportation board. Uh, and talks about how to use those monies whenever the opportunity. Life, so. I'm a whole issue right now, but it's really just a fundraising mechanism that's dedicated to transportation. But I'll, I'll pay a little more look into it, but. Cause you know, that's something you probably can see and it's still a mile left. I don't recall them having a new construction board in a while, so. Somebody thoughts about that?
Before it comes, Meredith, can you hear? Okay.
I can.
Okay, great. Sorry, I just wanted to check.
I don't know all the sources, but I believe part of the source is from your car registration.
Okay, that was, I was curious to leak it out.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Any other thoughts, um? The, in addition to. Addressing. Transportation is like capital facilities. It's kind of a, you know, it's a wishlist of things that city wants to do over the planning horizon. Um, specifically related to roads and sidewalks and bike facilities and transit. And so clearly a lot has happened since twenty fifteen related to sound transit and, and these planning efforts that were kind of spawned by some, the S T C passing. There are these, the safe streets and the safe highways. It just identified problems out there that we're, you know, the city's looking for funding for. So by having those plans adopted, you're in much better shape for a grant fund come available. And so that's a lot of what happens with the comprehensive plan. It serves as a source for us to find, you know, to be able to say, this is city policy. You know, we support, the city council supports this project. Here are a number of transportation policies that support this. So that's why it would be important to, to get into it, you know, from. Insulting from our city public works department about, you know, what kind of things they want to see. Put into the cop plan so that we are at the best. You know, shot at getting grant funding, you know, and not have to fund everything locally.
So I would think is, uh, part of why, meaning the priorities that we've already articulated in safe highways and safe streets. To the cop plan so that it can be leveraged for funding. Is that? Yeah, that's the, that's the direct line to that. Uh, would that also be, as I was looking through it, a few questions popped up, you know, and it does look like it's in the scope of work of the consultant, but. They had shown baselines of traffic patterns at, at that time on the two-state highways and what they expected them to be in twenty thirty-five. And so with that kind of information. I guess overall, my larger question is, what do we know about what we've accomplished relative to these goals and policies? From two thousand and fifteen? And sort of what served us, what hasn't, what's been missing, when we go for grants? Um, or are looking for funding, hopefully do some sort of gap analysis, but not only looks for alignment with those new documents, but also looks for. Where we've had difficulty competing because we haven't had a strong enough policy for a particular goal.
Well, that's one of the things that, you know, why we hire a consultant, they have an expertise and that's really key portion of the scope here is to. To do a gap analysis of that and, and also to, you know, we have people who specialize in this in our city public works department. And they're, you know, our best experts about what, you know, we can do, what, you know, what needs to be beefed up to give us the best shot. So, so, you know, if, I think the, you know, the key thing is, you know, is it concurrent, is it current with those, those new plans? Because the timeframe since those have been adopted, so this, the transportation element doesn't, it's, you know, as we've seen in all these other elements, it's pretty high level. Thirty thousand feet or it's not saying, you gotta do this project in twenty eighteen and then come high water. It's just, you know, these are the kind of things we should be looking for. So the question is more so in a cop plan, you know, is, uh, developing a parking right facility in Lake Forest Park still something that we value? Well, we did adopt, uh, regulations to make sure that it is developed, it's designed well. And so that's probably one we want to keep. So it's not really, did we achieve these things? You won't find many goals and say, you need to do this by this day, because that's not really what a cop plan does.
Correct.
It says the policy for, you know, here's, you know, here's the kind of thing each, when we think of projects, they should be consistent with these policies.
Like Johnson, but it's an aspirational document, but I got to thinking that we have talked to this point about a gap analysis that looks for. You know, where these new documents, like safe streets are reflected in the cop plan. But it pertains to me one thing we don't, heard you in. I didn't want to just assume it would happen, but better understanding where we can be competitive and how we frame those, so.
Yeah, I think we're going to get lots of.
That would get there.
And now. There's some interesting stuff that I don't, you know, here's something that I don't think we really have done a lot with, which is this transportation. Multimodal transportation of the service. Um, this is kind of one of those things that regions, the regional agency, the, the Sound Region Council was pushing for on the cop plan between the team. So I would think who did, but you know, what has really come out of it, I can't tell you. And, and so that would be interesting to see what our consultants say about, is this something we should keep? And, you know, level C D is not something, you know. A, a very high goal. All right, this, this, this graphic really just explains what happens there. Uh, and, and then the question is, we'll get into, what is our policy saying, what are we trying to achieve? Cause that is, that is kind of a marker, you said, from the company that, what level of service do we want? Or, you know, almost a transportation thing. So you're kind of getting at it right here. Um, so we'll see, and for the ultimate interest in seeing what the, these regional, regional agency has to prove our company and certify it, once we're done. That's what we're really going to need, you know, and so saying, we should put that in there to be, you know, cut out the dial a little bit on that. The multimodal service.
So a question just about the language of this. If we're not calling it a gap analysis. That we're asked consultants perform, what, what are we going to call that?
We are calling it.
We are calling it that, okay.
Okay, you'll see that, that word in the, uh, we'll probably.
Okay.
Cause I guess the final draft, the more words like.
Okay, okay, great. And then secondly, just clarification language. So we're talking, so my understanding is the cop plan, as you discussed, November. Is that it's mainly, its purpose is mainly aspiration, right, versus policy? It's not, it's not so much a policymaking document as it's an aspirational document. It guides us. Am I correct? Cause we're using, we're. We're using, um, we're talking about policy, but we're also talking about aspiration. So I just want to be clear about what.
Yeah, well, I, when, when we say policy related to the comprehensive plan, we, we're talking about, um, you know, things that, uh, guide. What, when you say policy, I said, I hear more strategies. How are we, how are we going to get there? More, more implemented? And what were, more tangible steps, actions? But these are policies, you know, related to the comprehensive plans and the moves. Uh, signage and, um, safe walkways, you know, pedestrian ways and, and. And installed through, uh, street by some intersection. These, they don't say by this date. So that, that's, you know, this is always a struggle for people, you know. Is this, you know, is this something, you know, tangible that we can say, yes, we did it, no, we didn't? Or is it something like these statements which don't have, they're, they're just guiding, you know, state, not necessarily aspirational. But when you come, when you come to some decision about, um, street lights. Make sure it's consistent, whatever we have in the cost plan. If the council's going to adopt this and they're saying, you know, every decision the city makes related to land use, the capital facilities, transportation should be consistent with this. Or we should go back and change this document. Every time we drop, adopt regulations, it should be consistent with what this says, uh, if it's, if it's relevant to, to the topic of that regulation. So, you know, we'll continue to kind of join, get a joint, uh, you know, understanding how this differs from like, from a strategic plan or from, you know. Part of this is a vision, which even more, that's really the aspirational part of the document. We talked about that, I think. From the first meetings where it says in twenty forty-four, Lake Forest Park is this, that, the other, in, in a different tense than the, than the policies. So, so we're going to, you know, it's going to kind of be tough to pin down exactly what we're trying, trying to achieve with this. But this is what cities have been doing for like five, ten decades. Their first comprehensive probably in the early thirties, mid thirties. Um, and so this is how they kind of evolved and, um, so, yeah, so taking a little while to get to know it and kind of figure out, you know, how, how it affects. How, how you identify, but you know, just kind of keep, keep struggling with it.
I appreciate you bringing that up because a big piece of this for the consultant and for us is to. Uh, provide community outreach on it. And I think that your question is actually one that a lot of people might have in the community. You know, what's the anatomy of the cop plan? You know, there are aspirational goals and within there, there are policies we aspire to, but they're not. Codified. I mean, they're not like rules. They haven't been turned into, you know.
They give the guide regulation.
Right. Right. And so I think that's a good point because it will be important for us to consider. As we are beginning to understand more the vocabulary and anatomy to make sure that's. And then, uh, so today you're a, a member of the public, you want a public comment at the end of everything, which, thank you so much. Uh, anybody else, as you read through the transportation element, any questions you've had about it? Comments you wanted to make?
I guess one of the things I was thinking about was. Getting state funding for some of these projects, typically since, you know, we have highways that we share, I guess, with King County and they come through here. I was reminded of when we had the bad weather and the snow and the ice and, um, you know, the plows had plowed the streets, but they had put it all onto our meter sidewalks. And people were actually walking through the streets, trying to navigate to get to bus stops and that sort of thing. I was like, you know, like this seems like. More than what Lake Forest Park should really be put on the hook for. I mean, it's, it's a public safety issue, not just for us, but for anybody who has to travel these. These are basically state highways. If I'm reading the maps correctly, like, you know. Am I wrong? I don't know. Well, I know that they come through here, but yeah, it's, it's owned by the state in a lot of ways.
It is, um, the, the state built it, but, um, the, technically all the right of way is city right of way. So, um, it's the state, um, you know, and the city, um, you know. Would, you know, just want to work towards more sidewalks in the city. Lake Forest Park suffers from the fact it was developed primarily in unincorporated King County. And there were no requirements for sidewalks, like there are, it's, you know, most parts of Seattle. And, and so it's, it's this, so much more expensive to build sidewalks after the fact than, you know, while, while, while an area is developing. But, you know, the, that's, that's what these, you know, documents, safe states and. They kind of set up, here's our priorities. We, we know we get funding for areas near schools, but those get done quickly, like, you know, down, down by, um, like, or it's not. Brookside, you know, that was, that was just done because that's, that, that is where the state is stepping on. They're not so much stepping up on their routes. Now we're getting sound transits to include at least one side of the five twenty-two. Uh, you know, their project, um, which is disappointing, but great, it should have been both sides. Um, but, you know. It's a long story.
Well, I think your, your comment is kind of more than me, like, how is it to, you know. Be a community member with the state on their highway and our, our challenges with sidewalks and the diagram that Steve has up is a, you know, and is it, is an example of something we might take up, which is. This idea of using the right of way throughout our city to put safer conditions and whether that's, you know, packed, impacted, you know, substrate or asphalt. Concrete or whatever to, you know, get safer passages so that when things like this, you know, occasionally happen, we've got a little more elbow room. In those, uh, right, so I think that, I don't want to, I don't want to lose enforcement, you know, operations related to this in this conversation.
Yeah, before we move off of complete streets, and the city did adopt a complete states, uh, ordinance that it's supposed to apply whenever we have those main projects. So, you know, once again, is the funding available to do the sidewalks? And, you know, do you need additional right of way? We're, you know, we've got, um. A real, you know, controversial process where sound transit is, is trying to acquire property along five twenty-two. To build the, at least the one sidewalk and bus lane that they, they plan to do. Uh, and so that encroaches on people's ideas, you know, uh, they, they thought this was, you know, they, they, the stuff is growing up. They've got this installation five twenty-two, that's going to change. And so. You know, there's, there's just so, so many aspects of coming in after the fact. Uh, and it makes it difficult to, to put in sidewalks after it's already been developed because people sense it's private property. But, you know, it's, uh, it's one, one step at a time. But anyway, yeah, so we're, so we're making progress on some things, um, in terms of, uh, some of the things that the cop twenty fifteen. Any other questions at all? I think we've spent a fair amount of time on this.
Yeah, can I just share, I, I felt like maybe we can talk, um, when we do review it, maybe talk about, it is a good time to talk about anything that we, or do we want to wait just to?
Let's, I was going to say, let's circle back, because I have questions about that relative to the consultant's role and our role, you know, whether or not.
Circle back once, once we talk about, so, and then talk about, because, because really, you know, what, what I'm hoping comes out of this space, you know, brief discussions of this, that you're, you're just aware of. You know, how, how we should be making sure we're getting the best product from our consultants. So, hey, do, do you see this in the safe streets? You know, this really, we really think, you know, this needs to go, to get better, you know, risk, uh, taken to a higher level. The cop plan, it's this important project because it, it gels with some things we heard during the public participation process. People really want this, you know, and we saw. You know, what, what you'll see in these documents too, is that there already have been these, uh, public engagement processes. And there's already valuable, well, just a few years ago, two or three years ago, still. Uh, public engagement processes, and they're already valuable, just a few years ago, two or three years ago, still very vast. So we should be taking advantage of that too, not, you know, trying to make sure that whatever public engagement process we come up with here. It's not just doing the same thing over, asking the same questions, one called the new question, so to the argument that was done in the last. So.
So what I hear you saying is that. The goal of all of this prepping and having some light conversation is to be very familiar with documents, so by the time the consultants are bored. You know, we're not overwhelmed with a lot of information. Uh, but, uh, one technique that I've been using that hopefully you will too, because we will circle back to the consultant is. You know, highlight maybe even in the PDF places you have questions as a, for example, for. T dash two dot one, it says create regularly updated non-motorized plan that identifies, et cetera, and I don't, I don't know that. A plan like that exists and in other sections there were calls to action like that, as if. We were going to do that, and maybe that was just a stake in the sand to try to get grant to fund the development of that or. But it would help to make.
That used to be done by another day, like six weeks.
Exactly, exactly. And so making notes like that now, we don't necessarily have to discuss them right at this moment, but those notes, that processing you're doing now would be. Helpful, I think, based on. Previous work of this body, I think it will be helpful, would have been given to the degree.
Is the transportation consultant going to be attending meetings? Once in a while, or is there just going to receive documentation?
It would, it would be a team, uh, so there's going to be some, I would imagine, uh, consulting, you would have, you know, transportation. Um, expert, then it may be part of all guns burned, or maybe, you know, a combination consultant, so, yeah, but. In the last go around, we were doing transportation, we had the that consulting team at the table with us. I think it may have been the same folks who did on six streets. Okay, so, um. Talk a little about, uh. Spend some time on economic development and just finally have background, since the, um. Since this this cop plan was adopted, we really, um. Town centers, and the focus of economic development, uh, planning work. And and I would say it's, you know. It's it it wasn't the key reason for doing the town center planning, the the vision and the sign guidelines. Uh, it, but it, you know, it definitely sets a, um, you know, a basis for. Uh, once, once it all penses out for some development. It, you know, it can create economic development because it involves bringing residential to town center. And, you know, what's always been, um, talked about in economic development, studies done for the city is that, you know, what we need is more people. Living in this this area, for businesses to be more, uh, successful, in order to be a greater variety. Is, so, so I think, um, you know, the town center work, uh, between twenty seventeen and twenty, um. Twenty twenty-one. Went a long ways just to figure out what what we, you know, what the council wanted, council to look like. Uh, when somebody comes along, he wants to go up to those standards, that's, that's a big if, when that's going to happen. But, um, anyway, so, uh, I think Walter, this was your suggestion, uh, that we take a look at this, would you, uh, did you have any thoughts since? Uh, last minute?
Um, no, but I think that you kind of touched on a a key point is that a lot of the focus on economic development in our community has been on town center. And I, you know, I would think that as we work on the cop, like, we kind of look at broadening. Some of these other areas within town center because it's. Well, it's central for the community, it's not necessarily, you know, local for everyone. So, I guess.
So looking at other potential, um.
We're kind of how economic development. Yeah, some of the other, you know, little areas we have, like local one oh four, but now there's a little. A coffee trailer, you know, certain sub mornings of the week, and, um, you know, or by the southern gateway where there's a new, um, market that's, you know, or, you know. Um, you know, see how, you know, some of our goals and policies in here can help kind of foster some of that other. Growth.
Not even finding out what kinds of. Regulations would encourage investment in those areas. Anybody else on economic development that owns? Questions or musings? I just had a couple, and, um, mine were, had to do with. Again, I'm not knowing exactly what we'll receive, consultants, you know, in terms of. Information or background for more work, I am curious to know, uh, you know, there were. Prior to the town centers changes, uh, southern gateways rezoning and and, uh. Sub area plan was envisioned to drive some of that economic development, and I wondered. How through this exercise we can learn a little bit about what. Was accomplished to the vision or what wasn't accomplished, so that as we begin to. Make these recommendations, like what could we do in Southern Gateway? Well, you know, what did we do? How did it turn out? To inform, maybe what could be different? You know, so that we're not just proposing the same. Same solutions, and that maybe we can apply some of that, um, you know, to these other areas you're talking about. So really just trying to find out more, uh, I I found the, uh, analysis, the volume two. To have some good information, but it will be nice, we, but we have these conversations if we would have current information about. What's driving economic, you know, what's driving our local economy and economic. Open here and regionally, so that we, we're just having a more informed conversation when it comes to time, instead of going, oh, well, that sounds good, let's rezone that little house and then the coffee park can move into, you know. Uh, several more ad hoc approach to our idea generation.
I think it'd have some people that are in the business that want to move their business from A to B, find out why they don't move to B.
Interestingly, the coffee car people are saying they're having a correct time finding a place they can open up a. A shop, but yeah, I think you're right. So is this something?
No, I I'm just, um, thinking about, for me, the my approach to this is how, does this reflect? You know, my values, stuff, I feel like, and do I identify with them? Yeah, I mean, I I would love, you know, and so I've got comments, maybe when we get into it, okay.
You know what, Meredith, I'm sorry, I should have stopped to bring you in on the last conversation, uh, holler if we've forgotten to check in with you. Do you have anything on? The economic development element you want to comment on?
Nope, nope, just listening.
Just another process comment, um. It's what I'm hearing, so placed by consulting cap on.
Yeah.
I would ask my client, my clients be, what are your guiding questions? And that's what I'm hearing you suggest that we consider. So each of these areas, we ask guiding questions that we might want to develop, to have a consultant think about.
Oh, it seems like there were guiding questions somewhere in here, because I wrote, are these still our guiding questions for this section, actually? I'll have to check. Uh, yes, exactly. I I I'm, I got headlong, just in full disclosure, headlong into like the information I feel like our group should have. In order to have a thoughtful and formal session, and what's the work of the consultant, you're in the meantime, so. I have it sorted all that out in my head, and I'm hoping Steve has some, you know, strong ideas for. How that process works, like where they're doing the work and when we come in and so forth.
Yeah, I think, um, maybe we cut off the scope, kind of be a little clear. But, uh, just, just, uh, briefly, to the, to to me, the the public engagement process is really where you start to develop that. Uh, what the guiding questions are, let's, you know, let's not represent it here in this, uh. You know, the comprehensive plan right now. And so, um, we we know that some of the things that are going to question, guiding questions on is. Our equity, you know, availability of housing and climate change. So those, those are, you know, things that you will see in this scope or work specifically called out, we want our consultants, uh, to work with. Um, this board and the Climate Action Committee to 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 address that issue, and then we actually want to do a study. Uh, that that looks at the housing issue. Yeah, more on that in a minute. Um, so any other, anything else on economic development? Should we move on to the scope?
Okay, and what are your goals for this conversation with the scope? Like, what kind of things are you looking for?
Um, well, I guess the the first level is what, um. Is everybody on the same page about how we're going to work with the consultant? So, and and then what what are your questions? Have we had a chance to look at this? Uh, so, and what, um. Are there, at at this level, are the things that you'd see, I think would be good to address? Um, because ultimately what I'd like to do is get. A recommendation of this, this part of the scope, this part of it, so this is the, uh. The the core piece of a, um, request for proposals that we have in dates, budget, all sorts of other stuff. This is really where you can, um, provide the best input in terms of, you know, what about, you know, what about that? But, uh, we want to mention something like like that, then to kind of see what your colleagues, how they think about that. Um, so. Let me just, uh, pull that document.
One thing, just so I'm understanding, I think it's the second bullet, talks about the consultants' interactions with this group, and so once we start that first. Of the twelve months, is it really just kind of their their meeting, their show, they prepare all the documents and send that out to us ahead of time? That's how we move from that, or?
Yeah, I mean, the, once we get into like the review of specific elements, uh, I think initially, uh, it will, um. They'll, you'll be, um, getting, trying to see if there's consensus about whatever they're recommending for a public engagement. And. And the the strategy of that, and and so then. Once you, once you have, um, that. Get that that underway. Then, uh, it will be, go bring, um, a draft element updates to you. Get get that right, and and, uh, they'll they'll change it, we'll go through each one of those, these elements, uh, talking about the changes that need to be made. And then you'll get another, look at the whole thing. And, uh, so there may also be a discussion upfront about, do we want to change the format? Everybody happy with the format of, you know, then volume one and then thicker volume two, just to make it more more accessible, or is there some other way to do it? Uh, so so there'll probably be some some more, what kind of global questions like.
I think you spoke about it, we'll start at the top.
Partner to. Their benchmark or. Percentage. For what? As far as deliverables from the consulting team on this, are there benchmarks or, uh? Preliminary, some metals, middle of. It'll the process of metal, so that. Just kind of like a schematic set, and then. Fill the road set, and then kind of.
During during the selection process or during other, no, no.
Project, so we, this, this is the, this is the, this is the RFP, so to speak.
Yeah.
And in here, describe what there's, you know, what they're going to be basing their, their bids on. I I don't see anything here that said, you know, it just says what they will do. And submit sub final, final report, not being involved, you know, with the committees and planning. And with the public stuff, but. Is there only one final report at the end, or are we going to get? You know, there might be a schematic report, I mean, it's gone this far, that's, this is kind of where we're at, kind of conceptual, so. You know, if there's, sometimes you get documents where so much inertia is gone, you can't change it. So something if we get a report early on, like, you know, I was talking about the thirty percent design.
Yeah, as 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 the structure of the year, I mean, we get a concept. Where they're headed, it's almost like an outlines best schedule, but this is kind of where we're at, this is what we see, and then maybe a another report. Later on, so we're a little more in detail, so that we don't get it all at the end, and we got to try to respond to all the stuff, so.
Well, the.
I don't see that, and I guess it's my question.
Yeah, the, the, um, it's it's a little, you know, one one thing that's different about, um. Project where you're updating policy codes is that, you know, you're you're taking it piece by piece, so, so it will be, when we do, uh. We review the, um, the many some probably where we start playing something, uh, because, you know, it kind of drives everything else. And so that, uh, you know, it's sort of like, uh, I mean, the the first round will be like the sixty percent level. Okay, this is these are the changes we recommend, uh, and and then the count, the the planning commission buys off on those, and then you come back to that. Uh, maybe once more, but probably, you know, you're you're looking at two, two touches on on each element during that process, this will get done. Um, so so the, but during the process, there will probably be memorandum, you know, here's what came out of the the public, um, danger process. Here, recommendations related to economic development or transportation level service, perhaps some memos that that guide that policy discussion. So, um, you know, but overall, I'm sure the consultants, um, you know, as part of their, their contract will have a, um, you know, timeline. You know, here's, here's what we want to get started, and so that's what the council will prove, as this is really just a beginning, and so what I'm going to see from consultants. Is for them to flesh out a, uh, you know, a true scope for, here's how we're going to do it. Okay, yeah, okay.
All right. I think that relates a lot back to what Ash said too, like, how are they working with us? What's our schedule? Like, will we know? Once they come on that in April, we're going to tackle this, and May, we're going to tackle that, like, are we following a schedule so that we can see how? Each month, right, because town center, we sort of circle back and circle back and circle back.
And circle back.
Yeah.
We need to get the things.
Yeah, that should be.
Yeah, so that we would, we would know what to expect, and then it would have the lead time to prepare. Yeah.
And that's what we want to look for, from our choosing.
Yeah, totally. Well, let's just start at the top, um, you've said that this is the kind of the draft that will be updated with sort of budget and timeline. Components, but all of this will effectively stop being a draft at some point and be the actual RFP.
Right.
And what's the goal in terms of getting this out and selecting somebody here?
Well, um, you know, it depends on kind of how much time planning officials spend on, hoping that, you know, maybe we, uh, take a second, get this piece of it. Uh, and and you're comfortable, um, saying the council was, you know, this looked like it covers what we need to get going. Uh, and, you know, it it's only three pages because, you know, we're, we're just, we're just trying to get the wind out and we need this developed. And so then we go through this, uh, process of, uh, hopefully, and, um, by by February, this is out on the streets, people are following me, asking questions. Are we going to have a meeting and so, uh, to 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 answer the consulting questions, that's either the first step, next, you know, and then there's a deadline for the RFP to come in. Well, it's something that we're very familiar with, and, and we'll have limits in the size of the documents, so, you know, not overwhelmed. Uh, and then then, um, uh, we'll form a selection committee, uh, of council members, by industry members and, uh, staff members and. And, um, and kind of just to rank them aside, who's the best person, who's the best, um, fit for the city. Uh, and hopefully we're working with, you know, half dozen, uh, good responses. Um, I'm a little concerned because we're kind of late into the game, the big cities are, are, you know, several months ahead of us. And this, and and it's stood up a lot of the consults, but, but, you know, maybe they're getting to the point now that. You know, we benefit from the fact that they've already gone through this, and they can make more safe recommendations about, you know, I don't think PSFC is really. Who cares about it, long to the, they've already gotten some plans, you know, part of the process, I definitely have this with the shoreline management.
Silver light, that's a good point, the silver light.
Silver light, yeah. Um, and so, so, yeah, so hopefully by, you know, March, April, we've got consultant, we're starting to, um, and, you know. And and you've got a a much clearer picture of the schedule, how it will lay out. And, you know, I think the overriding thing, uh, here is that, uh, as you've, you know, heard from. Uh, at least councilman voting that, you know, we we want this to be a pretty surgical, uh, update. But while there's some key areas you really need to improve on. Hoping that this is fairly quick process, and I put twelve months in there because it, you know, that that's, that's. And I put 12 months in there because it, you know, that that's that's hopefully, you know, the the upper limit. Want to give the consultant something, you know, a lot of times you in the end of these things, oh, well, two meetings here, two meetings. No, it takes 12 meetings and then they're still getting through this. And then maybe some additional meetings or some, you know, we compact some of that schedule so that you can get some of the council. So they have a good, you know, four to six months to digest what you're writing in before the end of 2024. Um, and so so I think you'll you'll see that once we have a consultant board, that a much better idea about the schedule and things and that. And you you just can't predict that at this level. We don't know how long it's gonna take us to get somebody aboard.
So it sounds like we have this meeting to provide some input on whether this scope of work reflects what we're hoping for. We'll give that feedback to Steve tonight, presumably at our February meeting. If there's any other discussion to be had, we'd have it and hopefully be wrapped up with whatever input we're gonna have as a group. And then between staff and also you guys will start thinking about US.
Yeah, I don't, you know, I don't expect you to have all your thoughts together on this tonight. I mean, your discussion the next time probably will be more fruitful because you'll have kind of understood a little bit more about this.
Yeah.
Uh, and and then, you know, we can certainly incorporate your comments um at at from the next meeting as well.
Let's take it like we've done some other things that just makes this been effective, but starting from the top and going to the bottom. Let's take each cat, each bullet and just see if there's questions, if not, we'll move on. If there are, then that'll be the making the notes on that you're looking for right now.
Yeah, so can we just move to the bullets?
Let's just.
Anybody have any questions?
Otherwise, overall, it's kind of a RFP that you did just create as RFP you had used last time updated it.
This this, no, this is um.
I mean, the 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 consultant scope we're taking, you didn't just.
This is not the same as last time. The last RFP for the 2015, it was it was really um highly focused on economic development. And and it was like, it was, you know, the city was struggling to figure out uh how to continue to be viable. And and so it was combined with a lot of studies that ended up kind of becoming this, you know, the the big five study and website. It it morphed into something else completely, but there was a lot of focus on economic development. And I don't know if it really was reflected in this comp plan because we eventually got the goal, we just need to update this comp plan. And and, you know, they're there, you know, so so the there were there was um the focus really became, we need a comp plan that's more that's more digestible. Previous one, it was just a lot of tight, narrow shoe uh policy for very few graphics. So that was a focus of this team. Um, but this 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 is, you know, based on kind of what the priorities are these days. There's some things that are very formulaic, like we need a robust citizen participation plan. And because that's a, you know, this is kind of language right out of the chain. All right, but other things, um, you know, the 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 next one's kind of, you know, just like, you know, we need to listen to uh what staff and what officials are saying and uh kind of setting an expectation there and just a general idea of number of meetings. Obviously, that affects the budget a lot, you know, having we have sent a finding commission news. And then, you know, this is this is this third bullet, it's really what drives this, the need to do this. We have a a mandatory periodic update right now. The state GMA requires us to an update or at least say, you know, I think our our complants do it, thanks, but we're not gonna update. Uh, and, you know, then you kind of open yourself up to, but what about the one? So so, you know, that's where I think the council in their budget makes it clear that they're they're invested in doing legitimate update. You know, they put $160,000 in the budget for this over the next two years. And we're also getting a grant from the Department of Commerce and another $120,000 for it in these two years. So so we all have a quarter million to work with, more or less.
Specifically for updating the plan or?
Yeah. updating the plan.
Um, can, let's start with the first bullet. Any any comments on that? Any questions about what that needs or what it anything needs to be leaves out? We need to um.
I think we talked about this a couple of meetings ago, um, about the idea of having a report card. And if I are a member of the public, I guess that's what I would be wondering, like, okay, well, we're doing this again. And maybe I was here 10 years ago and I remember this process and now I see it coming up again. It's like, but what do we do with all the other work? Like, where where are we at to be achieve any of those goals? Um, I think that would be a really good thing to include.
So maybe the high quality public outreach materials would include a strong report card. So I guess, I mean, Steve, you'll just have to read us in here where our comments may be are a good idea that's at a deep level of detail that isn't useful for this, but it is at a level of detail that's useful when you're evaluating proposals or?
Yeah, I mean, I think it is a good way to start discussion with public, like like you're suggesting that, you know, it may not be you know, analyzing every policy, but you know, it's part of it is they're saying, just in general, here's here's where we, you know, who makes progress in these types of areas and here's here's where, you know, we're still lacking.
Or here are the grants we're able to get based on the last comp plan and here's here the other whatever. And then here's where we still have opportunities. So just short, sweet, but you're right, it does talk.
Yeah, I mean, I thought, I mean, like, five acre woods is mentioned in here. Now, of course, we actually have a five acre woods and there was stuff done at the animal park, like the Ramada. That was actually, you know, completed that work and it would be nice to know, like, okay, well, here's our vision and here's what we were able to actually accomplish.
So from the other side, I hear that in two ways though. I hear that you're suggesting that we present a report card to the public of all these accomplishments, right? Or and are you also suggesting that we ask the public to read our our progress?
Um, I don't know. Well, I mean, they could do that, I suppose, at these meetings. I mean, they could grade the progress because they can go around and say, well, I don't really like that Ramada and I thought I envisioned something else or.
And I don't know if that's too big the scope of what it.
Yeah, I mean, I I just think that, you know, considering how much effort is being put into this, the public is probably gonna wanna know, well, but what what did we do? And if you didn't accomplish it, like, maybe, you know, they might they might want to ask why? Why can't we do this? Why did? Why wasn't this done?
You know, I I guess for me, I feel like it's it's not really like upgrading ourselves. I feel like it's more of an identity, like, is this who we are? And, uh, you know, these are uh the goal is if and I like the idea of not necessarily coming out and explaining so much time with a report card but saying, uh, this is who we are and this is how we define it, achieve and express ourselves. Does that make sense? And so it could be kind of a way to help people understand the the what this tool really is. It's a it's a self-identity, if you will, of the city. And it gives us, you know, it it and so if we're gonna put a freeway, we're gonna have a ton of freeway then we we actually want to put it in the the scope of this self-identity that we define.
Well, let's reel this in for a minute, just because I want to keep us task oriented. So in order for an RFP to go on a timely manner, all we're doing is is trying to identify if the task is has been articulated with enough specificity or doesn't leave anyone out. Um, outreach materials can be education, they can be reports, they can be all sorts of things. So I think if I can channel us, I think a broader question is who defines what's appropriate public outreach materials? You know, or is that is that going to be the the person who's making the proposal to us and they'll describe some of those? Or is that us and we want to be sure and have specific things in those materials? What's appropriate?
I think, you know, that there's there would be support for the idea of, you know, especially when council members, you know, what? Here's what we accomplished.
Right.
Can add a support to that. Uh, and I I think there will also be support for, you know, here's what we still need to get to. Uh, and and so I think it is a great way, you know, that we can find a way to to work that in that and and make it clear, especially like in the the gap analysis, what really get to, what do we not get to? And what we're proud of, you know, they're top ten all four. So so, yeah, I think that's a that's there's a way to do that.
Do you need to state that there or is that?
I think I do, because you you know, that's gonna be something consultants don't see every time in these documents, it's something that really provides some, you know, like, okay, uh, here's somebody actually wants to, you know, kind of see how they get.
Want it maybe just quantify and qualify and name by robust.
Yeah.
And I think a lot of this stuff, and they're gonna have this when they're, you know, they come in for interview. Very. And and if and if you have to be part of the interview process, and this is this is kind of this outreach is really kind of turning your crank. You ask them that question, see what the response is.
Yeah, well, and on the flip side, but David said you may, if you're interviewing, to be hired for this, you may ask, would you need by robust?
Yeah, but yeah, find out what the response is. If I'm gonna go, yeah, we'll we'll send you some little part, we're gonna pass. Or like, okay, they're gonna say, have we got all kinds of ideas for this to show you, you know, like this guy can use my code. Right, so I mean, I think that's the stuff that comes out in the interview process.
Well, let's move that forward. Does anybody have anything to add to this? And Steve, do you have other questions for us about adding specificity on what robust and what high quality mean?
Um, no, I I think I'd like to, you know, the to be able to kind of figure out how to incorporate the report card idea and that first bullet. Uh, and then just kind of see get your reactions to that because because I think that's really where it's most useful is in the public engagement process. And getting people, you know, tangible idea, what is what's in this that, you know, we can, you know, check off? Because I think a lot of people have the same reaction you do, first of all, like, okay, what what do we do? What what can we what can we delete from this? And so, you know, that that's a beginning way to have a conversation. So I I like that idea. I don't think I have anything else on those. So any any other comments on any of the boards in the first page?
What about forward to? I'll say on first, the first one, I don't want to split any hairs here, but do we want to add the word surveys? I know there was a lot of success previously with the AD even doing survey outreach and also it's a flex reach here, but having some pointed questions meant really helpful to reach the people and talk like.
I mean, it's almost like the way you have on the fourth bullet where you have subbullets. In this case, you could like provide a little more information on what a public participation process would have in terms of votes for reaching out or, you know, what kind of materials we envision or, you know, like we just wait to we type what Ash said, we're gonna go with what Ash said. Okay, anything else on the first bullet? Otherwise, we'll move on to the next one. Seeing then, oh, Meredith, do you have any comments on that first bullet? All right, second one. Any comments?
Um, yeah, I have a comment on I guess the the meetings. So we identified they should the consultant plan on meeting with a commission on a monthly basis for 12 months. And we, you know, there's specificity to that, but, you know, there should they should additionally plan on meeting with the public at a very, you know, certain frequency, maybe even the um the council. And so should we provide some guidance on like a minimum number? I know we have, there's a comment that says additional meetings will be determined under separate scope of work. But we can provide some guidance, like, you know, a quarterly meeting with the public or quarterly meeting with the council for updates that might provide.
I agree. Yeah. See some nodding around the room.
Do we want to say 12 months or 12 meetings? Because when we did town center and the parking product, did we have them in here every month?
Sometimes twice a month.
We are, and we have meetings sometimes without them.
Yeah.
So it's kind of like, maybe it has to be here every month.
Yeah. I think part of that, that was getting things done and if if the schedule's strong and and more prescriptive, the way Steve has described, then I don't think we'll be in that.
In that same.
Yeah, they don't say, but I do, I I hear what you're saying. Walter, and I think it fills a little bit on something Ash said earlier, you know, like, what is our schedule or key milestones or reporting expectations? You know, just a little more detail there is is probably useful, both so that they can build a nice proposal for us, but also so that you know, we have developed our whole clarity about what, how we see ourselves interacting with them and and what regularity.
What, um, I guess, uh, one of the things that you generally give your consultants some you know, freedom to run with is this public participation plan. And so that's usually the public involvement is front loaded. I mean, you're out there doing, uh, they're probably gonna suggest, you know, some small meetings and workshops and things like that. And so I would say that, uh, um, you know, that, well, I think what you're talking about is kind of like another bullet in terms of just talking with the, you know, some maybe some joint meetings with planning commission, council member to talk about the progress so far and keep the council up to date. You know, this, well, the the reason I have have the, you know, additional meetings is because you don't know how long the the council is gonna take to do this. And so uh you're you're never right about how many, you know, the what are they gonna need to do with the council. But we could say something like quarterly updates of the city council about the finding commission partners.
Yeah, I think that also there's a title there in the, it's missing, I think, a semi-colon. Received citizen comma elected official comma commission members, it's all part of one. I think there's supposed to be a semi-colon after uh risk uh progress updates comma or semi-colon received.
Official line or?
And on line 19, I think it's there's a list within a list.
Yeah.
Anyway, after, okay, anything else on bullet two?
So with 12 months, is it some the timeframe that we've given is about two years for this process? And are are you the budget then? How does that coordinate? Is it for the 12 month period or when you ask for projects, what it would, uh, they will? The consultants will say we do this in a next amount of dollars.
Yeah, we'll we'll develop a more robust timeline to for for the you know, once you kind of sort of narrow down uh who the consultant would be. Uh, we we know that the deadline is the end of 2024, so we'll kind of work backwards from that. But we know that the the biggest chunk of time, planning, I guess I'm I'm trying to you know, tie it up, tie it up too much before we even, you know, know uh what kind of consultants we're gonna have. But did I get into your question or?
Yeah, I was just trying to get the like how the the call, like if we do the runoff, whether that's for the thing like how the cost of, you know, the consultants.
That frequently happens. So that's why, you know, I I want to, um, you know, uh, get them to kind of bite off the first phase of getting, the focus of this really is to getting future recommendation. Uh, and and then we'll have another phase after that. And if that's really, that's the that's really all you can predict uh initially. We're just looking at a lot of other cities, they don't necessarily try to lay it all out how it's gonna happen. Uh, because, uh, you know, the consultant can can help flesh out a lot. So why should we spend a whole lot of time before we have somebody to work on knowing all the details, but how, what's gonna happen then?
Could you resolve this by saying something like on line 21, where is this consultant should initially plan on meeting with? Could we say consultants should uh develop um regular meeting schedule with key stakeholders, including monthly meetings with the planning commission? And then I don't know if you need additional meetings with the different members of this work because it's either in what they've proposed or it's not, right? But that would give specificity for time with us, but say to them, you definitely need to tell us when the meeting schedule is going to be with our our key stakeholders versus telling them what it should be. What do you think?
I like that.
Yeah. All right, that makes it tidy. All right, third bullet.
Can I just say something really quick? Because I was looking at page 12 of the old plan and it says, under planning commission meetings between mid 2014 and the adoption of the 2015 plan, the planning commission that 29 times distributed information. 29 times, okay. No, that's a lot.
It was a huge update, a big, you know, everything was from scratch.
And that didn't necessarily include the consultant every time I would pursue, you know, with town center, we sometimes that twice a month.
Okay.
Often with that twice a month for a while.
Are we looking at that same kind of here too? Okay.
I don't think it's gonna be quite as involved.
Okay.
Starting to describe.
I don't think so. Yeah, there's a sort of before we move on, I think we also add something to the effect that they should actually help us stay within six, help us stay on schedule basically. They can't guarantee it, but at least that part of the uh the desire that we want is to help help us. Yeah, because we've been sure our plan.
Although that might be an expectation because they're gonna be staying inside their budget, terrorizing parameters as well.
Yeah, there's so many, so many things that go into staying on schedule. Yeah, there's so many, so many things that go into staying on schedule.
Yeah, well, we could be going off, but, you know, we're relying on their expertise to help. Help, uh, you know, kind of keep us focused and on track.
And I, I don't help us. Um, although I think we have to, let's, let's share everybody's. Okay, um, third bullet.
So I have some things around the, the third bullet.
Okay.
So as I'm looking through, as I'm reading through this proposal, uh, I was thinking, what's the overall objective? Like, what's, what's the ultimate deliverable that we want to accomplish here? And it seems to me that three, third point identifies what that is. So I'm wondering if. Uh, we want to have an objective statement. Before we get to all the bullets, because all the bullets represent how we're going to accomplish that, how we're going to meet that overall deliverable. So for instance, a public participation plan lends to this third bullet. Because it's the overall objective, we're updating the part that they can't plan.
Oh, so did you look at the?
Yeah. But for, for me, this just basically says the same thing.
Well, let me see, like, the, what you were suggesting might be better added, you know, if, if there's some statement about it. And that objective, um, you know, the, the, the reason we repeated, because this is so important. You don't, and you want to say the consultant, um, you know. This is, this is why we're doing this, right, so. And, and so we don't want to miss it, so I guess a little redundancy seems like a, a safety measure here. Okay, but yeah, we can, we can certainly massage it. As some ideas about it, you know, more readable, I know that's kind of a long, um, parenthesis, say, and then.
Um, and is it, is it a gap analysis or are there many analyses on this? I'm thinking about what our Stogel board was last year, and there were a number of gap. Analysis, you know, things that were going to be done. I just wonder if for readability, if it's, if it's bulleted out.
Yeah, we could have some.
Our, our work plan for last year talked about a gap analysis regarding housing is in the middle. Gap analysis regarding climate change policy, gap analysis regarding equity, gap analysis for chain making systems. Um, and I, I just wonder if like that might help if there, if, if there are. And, and it could be, you know. Like essential whatever, and, and, you know, documents or policies that inform this, including but not limited to X and Y and Z.
That, that makes sense.
So maybe just, um, pull up this out and break up some of that language from the, uh.
From this past year's work plan, yeah. And it could, or it could be like things lying or. Depending on what we actually wanted there versus other optional sources. Okay, anything else for three? So more readability and specificity. For about four. This, I think, is the volume two pieces I read it, is that how you guys read it? This is all the stuff that exists in volume two of our current.
Well, this is, this is actually volume one, uh, books on volume one, and, and anytime you do something volume one, you should update volume two. To, uh, include that, it supports it. And that's why, you know, update elements and appendices reflex. And. Have change in terms. Uh, and, um, and so then we get into the, the details of each, you know, element or chapter. Of course, chapters, you're actually not really an element, but it incorporates the vision.
So the bullet above is more about the. I guess maps and texts and gap analysis, like. One to me, one bullet seems like maybe it has more to do with what's going to inform the change and the other is going to be all of the associated deliverables that come out of it. It's that. Update elements and appendices, but aren't the maps and texts in the previous bullet part of the elements? I guess you're referring to the elements being the actual broad chapters.
Yeah, transportation.
Yeah, I got kind of muddled with over sports.
Yeah, so the, um. That's just kind of the, the, the third bullets. Just sort of an overall, look at the whole comprehensive plan, uh, and make sure everything, um, is, um. Re- reflects, um, you know, the, uh. All, all the changes you're making, change of policy, maybe have a change of, of map or graphic. I think that's what that's, yeah, I'm looking at the document as whole, does it hold together?
Maybe, maybe what would help for readability, I mean, it would be update the elements and their associated appendices. Just to make sense, because I think I got kind of tripped that way, like there was the vision one, and then it had appendices, volume one and the two, right? I, I, I got kind of lost going, which I guess. Anybody else have comments about the fourth bullet? Meredith? Walter, I know.
Just, just one question. I'm sorry, but when I think about developing a vision, I, that takes a whole lot of time. Like, are we? I, I'm just wondering if we want parameters around this issue, like, yeah, I can understand updating it better meet that. Whatever the means that they might identify, but I. Would be hesitant to support a whole process and developing a brand of it.
Yeah, second that.
Because that just gets into a way.
So, yeah, I, I, I think you, you just, you really take the, when you do the public, um, engagement. You're taking the temperature of the community and you say, does, that's like the first question you're asked, does this vision still represent? On what we want, uh, you know, it was 20, whatever the years now, now would be 2044, right? Because that's where we want to be in 2024, or, or are there some tweaks we can make to this? You know, like equity related, uh, housing fairness related, those kind of things. Yes, I think it would, it would be on the search. Not totally started.
Do we just specify that at all or?
Uh, uh, I'll definitely, you know, see, see if I can work, work at it, I appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah, because I can see from the, uh, consulting perspective, oh, they must create a new vision here.
Yeah.
So like, well, so this is kind of a, a kind of a who we are kind of document. But last was the 2015. So that was probably started in 2013, what came. So this is 10 years later, basically. A lot of the people that were around 10 years ago, that was their vision, they're, they're gone, and now we got. People are different. And it changed.
But I think David is right, we don't want to signal to them that they need to change it.
No.
He might give them feedback on how equity needs to be pulled better, you know, into that and so on.
A lot of static document.
Yeah.
Change with the.
Right. If the context is wrong, right?
In what?
In the context of growth. Yeah, our state, we are in the context of growth.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. I have a question about the housing element sub-bullet. Um, and the congruency with, uh. And we're not there yet, so I don't want to shift our conversation for our work plan, but in our work plan and somewhere else I saw this. A, uh. Housing action plan was, uh, listed in our work plan and, and then. This housing needs assessment is something they've talked about before, so I'm not.
Yeah, so. And housing, uh. Terms, terms of evolving as, uh, you know. More people start talking about this, so I, I would say. Housing needs assessments, uh, is more accurate to what I think we need, an action plan would be like, if, if, if we're between conference of plans. We, we, we want to do something more likely other plans that are done mid, you know, they're, they're just standalone documents. This housing needs assessment hopefully is, uh, a, a, a smaller, uh, chunk of effort and resources. And it just says, here's, here's some, you know, the information you need to make enlightened, uh, policy decisions about your, your, your policies. It's not necessarily a whole action plan. So that, that's why, um, I moved to this, this line, we're just hoping to, you know, keep it from becoming the, you know, the, the. Dominating the rest of the updated conference plan. But I see it as just kind of a, you know, um. Fairly quick study. You know, here's, here's what other cities are doing, here's what seems to be within, you know, here, here are the deficits and. Where's spark related to, um, availability and different kinds of housing. And, um, you know, here's, uh, areas where you would probably want to have some policy language. It might be kind of a big memo. So that, that's why I kind of match it down.
Right, okay, so, but for our purposes, we're gonna call it a housing needs assessment, and that needs assessment will include a plan. Or a set of recommendations for accommodating or policies, I guess, to use the language of the, the. Policies that would help us accommodate the projected. Or to address the housing nature of people across all levels. Okay. All right, that was just my only question, Dave, so helps. Anybody else have any other feedback on this bullet or there's some bullets?
Well, but. Steve mentioned, uh. How do we indicate that there's? That we want the consultant to weight these. Someone lady or, you know, that we don't want them to put, like you said, you know, not place so, so much attention on the housing element. Versus the other elements.
Well, that's, you know, once you have them in the room, well, that's the kind of nuance you get into.
That makes sense, obviously.
Okay, I'm gonna move us along, you stop me if you're really burning up with something. Um, all right, uh, next bullet, review the critical areas ordinance. Maybe if you want to set some contracts for that, because I didn't understand, I don't know.
Yeah, this is, um. You know, the science of comprehensive plan, the growth management act. Rock to community with, who's. You know, you know, a sort of regulation where everybody had to adopt this critical areas ordinance. Uh, and so it's like the, the, the main thing, you want your consultant to say, yeah, you're in good shape with this. So it, it's really growth managed, driven in my perspective, uh, that, you know, because you, you, all these agencies want to weigh in on us. Uh, just like our shoreline manual plan. Um, and so I, I thought, like, you know, looking at other, um. Other communities, this will be a good thing to do, because we haven't updated it really, uh, in about five, five years, you know. Uh, so, so probably would be it's time to at least look at that one, but, you know, it's, it's your, we're just focusing on that one because it's so important. On, uh, the standpoint of state and local issues, we, we have so many critical areas, uh, you know, that would make up our city. Uh, the, the, the more we can do to, uh, to, to make this effective ordinance, the better, if they have ideas about it. So, so, you know, we get some input from them during this process. It's, it's the idea, and I guess, I guess the, what I'd like to start with was, whenever you update your comprehensive plan, you also have to say. Our ordinances are in compliance with this, uh, adopted comprehensive plan right away. So it's not, it's not like, you know, if we're just from, from people sort of a, a long range planning, you know, perspective, why do you have to? You know, the, the ideas, uh, in future, like, they used to, they used to call it the map, it's the land, you're saying the future means. Well, in growth, under growth management, Washington, say it can't be a picture. You can't like work your way, you're zoning into what the map says, you have to, like, it has to be consistent right now. Uh, and so, so everything, uh, as soon as you adopt the comp plan, then your, you know, the clock is ticking under all of your ordinances.
This is kind of a where a statement where it, it could say, whereas the critical area ordinance, uh. Is it informing set of ordinances for our comp plan, we want to make sure that it, it itself is actually in compliance with these other things. And therefore it's also a part of the scope of work.
Yeah, I, um.
Like versus that it just feels like a, like a straggler, this other body of work that is disassociated from our comp plan.
Yeah, I think, I think that, you know, it seems that way, kind of coming out of, uh, the first book, but, you know, you're, when, when you send this thing out, you're talking, you know. You're talking with the wire here, I mean, but they, they know this is usually part of this, and that's why it's just kind of. Like, um, added in there, so, so, I mean, if you were to expand it, I, I would say, sure that. Our review critical area or this and all other language regulations to ensure that they meet these requirements. That would be.
I think the thing that just tripped me up is conference plan policies, because to me, the critical area ordinance should inform those policies, not be informed by those policies.
Well, in the growth management, uh, it's, it's kind of the reverse. Yeah, because you, you adopt a comprehensive plan, so, uh, so that it informs all of your, your regulations. I mean, we're doing a little bit of a reverse, because we're looking at our town center codes and what changed policy wise, but, but generally, the way growth management works is. You, you adopt a comprehensive plan and, uh, all of your regulations need to be consistent. So, so you can imagine, you know, like rural areas or, uh, places that are kind of on the edge of the growth. Area that it's really important that you adopted, um, you know, a set of, um. Like levels of surface or sewer and water, uh, in, in your, in your comprehensive plan, that's where. Usually talk about it first, that you've got to have regulations that reflect that, I can't let people develop without putting in the sewer and water on that stuff.
It just seems like our critical area ordinance should be informed by. Like certain of our community values, but policy requirements and other, other laws. And that, that. Conference of man should align with that, right? And to me, the critical areas sort of seems like, at least the way I understand it, is a very special body that helps us actually protect. Our environment in key ways, and that's informed by the best science, not necessarily what we. Envision or ask, aspire.
Yeah, hopefully our comp wins.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I.
I think the bottom line is you're looking at them all at the same time, just making sure that, you know, it's consistent across the board, so. But I appreciate the comment, you know, maybe we say critical areas, of course, and all of it.
Does anybody else have anything to add there? Meredith? Okay, um, then we've just got a couple more bullets, any comments on any of those? Let's see, straight forward.
So. I'm not sure how to add it to, uh, so we talked about. Uh, the consultant working with the climate action committee or the climate action plan. Uh, the, uh, of course, this. Planning Commission, the Parks and Recreation Board. Is, what, what about the tree board? How involved in the tree board in that?
Um. The tree board has generally, um, you know. Not. I don't know why, I mean, two, but really focus on regulations. And, and actually projects, I think it's just the nature of that board that, uh, they didn't kind of come up here, but I mean, you, you could, um. You could have had something after the environmental quality, uh, and shorelines element, but, uh, you know, seek out comments on tree board there. By, yes, yeah, just for being all inclusive.
Yeah.
We don't leave it out.
Well, we like.
They need to work with public works, that was something, are there, maybe that's how we do it for each one, you know, key audience. Full and. You know, public works, key audience, tree board, key, or, you know, key stakeholder, or something like that might be a nice. Way to show which groups are. In these, or it could just be another section in this scope of work that puts like key stakeholders, right? So they kind of have a starting list of, that are going to age, it's not all just general public, it also puts tree board, good search foundation. And that they would, that way they could see a pre-populated list, we provided a, these are folks that we want as part of our public outreach.
And that, that's usually, when you develop the public outreach plan, that's what you get into. Who are the, who are the big people you want us to meet, that's, so.
Right.
Um, so I, you know, once again, I think that, that's kind of a nuance that you, you, you're, you're going to cover as soon as you got them under contract.
Yeah.
And everybody's going to want to make sure that happens. But, um, yeah, I think, um. You know, yeah, I think.
It might be compelling for whoever's proposing, just to see like, oh, they have this stretch foundation and a tree board or parks and right for, you know, like. Maybe just a little, at least a light inventory.
Maybe in the early part of the description, talking about, there's, there's a lot of them.
Very, I love community. Um, and I think to, to that same list sort of idea at the end, I wondered if, um, there was, uh, any value in. You know, even having like a list of specific deliverables, like these are some key things, right? Like an outreach plan or timeline or, you know, like as. Like that was one thing that one of them decided to bring up is a lack of deliverables.
Or just identifying.
I identify what some key deliverables are like, and maybe that just says that key deliverables include. But are not limited to.
Yeah, like, right, so that it's just at least kind of called out instead of embedded in the bullets. How come we can't ask them to provide that? Could we ask? This has that right.
You, you want to, want to listen to what was on there?
Yeah, your proposal should have been.
Well, I mean, your, your, um. Your scope of work should include, you know, these. You know, the, 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 the housing needs analysis.
Right.
But, but we're, you know, we're, we will, um, get a chance to. Really solidify that, and they'll probably come up with, like you said, not limited to, here's some things. Want to public that, uh, data plan and public needs assessment.
On that bullet, the under take primary responsibility is the planning commission lumped into public input, or would you want us called out? Or other community stakeholders called out, or are all of those just lumped into public?
Um, you know, the planning commission, I mean, as a recommended body, so you're kind of. You know, you're, you're, you're the clearinghouse for all of this public input. You're going to get a report. Saying here's who we talked to, here's what they said, so, um, you know, that. You, you have a gate, plan doesn't go anywhere until we recommend it, so. You don't, you don't necessarily have to include it, because you're already in the scope.
Okay, before we close this, anybody else have other? Comments or questions? About the scope of the consultant?
So you say you're going to produce the R and P marshable time, or do we look at the full R and P or are we just limited to what the scope of work?
I, I think it would, it would be the best use of your time.
You said it just for.
I'll send it, yeah, you'll, you'll, you'll see it for sure. And the, uh, you know, the, I think. The, the, the main thing, uh, really, you know, for you is, if anybody said that. I'm here first, here's how, I can be kind of what this, this, we want to put on, so, so some of your comments, I think, will affect other parts of the R and P. But, um, I, I think I need some license to, to kind of just get this thing together. Uh, and, uh, not get too much review, uh, but, you know, if, uh, you know. You want to hang back to it, uh, once we take it to council, certainly. Open that, or even come to council meeting and just say, you know, here's one thing that, you know, Steve missed.
Well, he was just asking to see it, right? Not necessarily review.
Yeah, not.
Oh, yeah, no, you definitely, I'll send you whatever, whatever we, uh, end up with. But these are very comments.
Definitely not going to rhyme.
I RFP and I do.
So you're just going, then you're bringing, you are bringing it back the next draft?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to update it based on these comments. Maybe, um, you know, uh, if, if it seems like the comments better addressing some, you know, other section. Like an introduction to the R and P, like we talked about all of the stakeholders out there. Maybe it'll have a paragraph that will be outside of the scopes. Say that, yeah, I'll bring you back another draft based on your comments.
If, if that's it, right, then we get just, let you take it and send it out after that.
Ideally. I mean, uh, this is the first time that I've ever, you know, been able to go do this with the planning. It's evolved over time, you know. I came in, in the middle, very end of the first comprehensive plan I was here for, and, uh, it just developed within the two thousand four, two thousand six. Uh, and then, um, the, the second one that resulted in this was, was really, it just became this huge group project. Uh, you know, everybody in administration involved, and if we know, had this heavy emphasis on figuring out all the indicators. For economic development, uh, and so I'm really glad to just feel that kind of come to you and say. You're going to update this thing and just have a, you know, uh, you know, truly try to just, you know, improve, make it a better plan and, and get your. You know, your familiarity as you go on planning commissioners, you're thinking about that, that document. And what, what process you went through, just kind of like the way, you know, Richard and John talked about. This is, this is, it's going to be a really rewarding process.
Well, like you said, it's surgical, but we don't need to look at all of these documents, it's neither to re-licate anything, it's just very surgical. It's just who's doing the job or this is. Okay, I am credit to ending our meeting on time, so I'd love to move into, uh. Uh, these two documents that Nick. Put out to us, created, I thank you for doing that, Nick, and thank you, Steve, for letting us have a chance to weigh in on the scope of work. So I don't know if any of you looked up last year's report or the previous year's report, but this sort of follows the same format we have been using. But I'd like to open up the report for any conversation or comments. Questions?
I didn't realize how much time he spent on sign code.
Right. Do much like here. But, you know, every conversation felt like we were attacked by something. You know, useful. Okay. Does anybody have any questions about this report or comments or feedback or any utterance that we should make space for? Meredith, do you have any thing on our report? Um, the only, the only, uh, I always have feedback, sorry. Um, the only, uh, ad I was going to suggest, uh, was that, um, in October, commission memorandum to accompany recommendation to council. It's just to reference the recommendation that was for the R U E. In that right-hand column for the October eighteen meetings. Following.
Yeah, I'll get it correct.
Okay. And then how did we handle last year? Does anybody here remember that was part of our last year's report? How we handled the things? That we didn't touch, like the shoreline master program. And then we, we didn't get into, you know, because we shared this work plan with the council, we didn't. Do any of this gap analysis, although I don't know what doing it would have been. Anyway. Do you remember how we done it for the work we did not do?
Uh, in the, in the report?
Yeah.
Um, you could, uh, go back and. And, yeah, I think that would be something you would, you know, just kind of put in this, uh, summary, uh, portion on the, the second page. But, you know, these things were on our, we didn't get to it because just, you know, there are other things, uh, priorities. We had something like that.
Same thing, just added like a last sentence to that.
We didn't get there.
Well, and there was a reason for the shoreline master plan, but I don't. That was never ready for us to look at or decided not to, like, I don't know the why, but.
Well, we, um, narrowed the scope, but if we get to it, you're just going to work the dredging policy.
Yeah.
See the consensus about that, and you didn't get to it, so the, the thought really was, um, we need to get a council just to adopt it. Okay, um, it's so hard to amend anyway.
Is that something like, Nick, would it be helpful if I wrote a sentence or two, or would you like to just write a sentence?
Yeah, if you want to suggest some language, I can just add it, and then we can, um, we can put it in the minutes, and then we can pour on adoption. I can change it, yeah.
Yeah, do you guys have any? Particular stake in this exercise? I'm more just like dotting an eye here, so it's not. I, I just what Steve said, I, you know, regarding, you know, our two thousand twenty-two scope of work. It was determined that work on the shoreline master plan wasn't. Useful or awful, or I don't know.
Wasn't, wasn't a priority, because council was going to, um, look at it, pick it on directly.
Pick it on directly, perfect. And then, um, and then, uh, the work on how was it framed here? The, the preparation work for the comprehensive plan is, uh, was pushed in, you know, twenty twenty-three. Okay. I think that being that just to remain accountable and show a line. Okay, is everybody comfortable with that? And then do we need to wait for that, or can we just vote to approve it and send it to council?
Yeah, I think it's still, if you're ready for it, say, you're ready to submit your work plan, I'll go again.
Oh, okay, well, then let's talk about the work plan. Did everyone have a chance to review that and what? Question, comments? You have about it?
I would add that. This is where you need to point out for the, regarding the home state, housing needs.
Yeah.
That would be my recommendation.
So review, uh, uh, planning so grass of the housing needs assessment instead of housing action thing?
Yeah.
Anything else to others? Are we, sorry.
Go ahead, Lewis.
Yeah, are we wanting to fill in the question marks now?
I didn't want you to say. What ideas do you have? Uh, uh, the only emphasis is like, you know, really, they should be thinking ninety percent.
Sure.
So many issues you want to get into, yeah.
I was going to say some of that work we didn't get to last year, should we account for that ten percent, like you said, the dredging?
That was the shoreline master plan, and the, we said, the reason we didn't do it and are not going to do it is because the council is going to take it up formally. And then the other thing we, is the comp plan, which we just, we're never ready.
I, I just feel like it's a hundred percent.
Okay, so we're all in agreement that we're a hundred percent confident and share.
We put two hundred percent.
What does a host in public engagement activities mean?
Oh, it's not really good grammar, but, um, host. Uh, the, the key word there is scratched again.
And how does that overlap with the consultants' work? Or is it that we're, we're working in collaboration with them, or are we holding our engagement?
I, I think you're going to, you're going to find that, you know, uh, you're, you know, when you talk about it, you already that you're going to want to. Go to, you know, be a liaison with some of these commissions, these committee, other committees, vibrant committees, uh, and. There may be opportunities, you know, planning commissioners just to go out and have meetings with, um, you know, small groups. So I, I use host, uh, just because, uh, as a planning commission, uh, I'm getting some asking, you want to kind of commit to that with council? You're, you know, you're, you're, you're the venue for these workshops that the consultant's going to run, but, you know, you're, you're the main years. For what comes out of those, I mean, you know, you'll get summaries, but, you know, you are the hosts of this health and update, and it's a big.
How is that? Um, so I've heard a couple, I heard a couple of things in there, but I was thinking like the public meetings rules. So we're hosting a meeting. I guess I just want to be sure what we're committing to with this on the work plan. If it's just showing up at the consultant's public engagement?
Yeah, it's, it's not really, um, like, if it's a workshop, uh, everybody can come, you know, call a planning machine. If, if you decide that it is, you, you, you can go either way, it's this planning machine meeting and take it over consultant. Uh, do your workshop. But generally, uh, it'll be a workshop, someone's running it, there's a question, that's, that it's a planning commission. Or it's one or two of them talking with some group.
Third place comments or something.
Yeah.
Can I, um, interject that my, uh, this same issue is going to come up with the Parks and Recreation Board developing the. Master plans for the watershed waterfront park and, and for the larger park system. And I, I, I think that our preference is that. The planning commission or the Parks and Recreation Board host those meetings. And the consultant may do a lot of the legwork, but. We want the community to connect with the community representatives, um, not just with, uh, a consultant. So from my point of view, I like the word host. Uh, that doesn't mean that you have to, uh, do a lot of individual work, but I just wanted to weigh in on that. Um, uh, you can decide, it's your work plan, not mine, but I just wanted to provide that feedback.
Council member, do you, are you thinking then, like, any mailings that go out or surveys or workshops or anything? It would be the Lake Forest Park Planning Commission invites you to fill out a survey, it's in this workshop, come have a. Coffee with the commission type, like, that it's. Hosting in that definition?
Yes, in that sense, and then, of course, the consultants would prepare the materials and make suggestions on. How the meeting should go and so forth, but you would still have the ability to shape that to what you would like to. Um, have it be as the host. So yes, that's the kind of thing I'm thinking of.
You know, I'm thinking of everybody here, uh, since this work plan typically defines, and when we say a hundred percent, it defines our time in our, in our meetings. Um, I wonder if that question mark line is in fact. This sort of outside of our meetings. Like, because this isn't a hundred percent, a hundred percent of twelve meetings, or is it a hundred percent of anything that we do? Is it a meeting time versus not meeting time?
It's like a hundred percent of each meeting will be brought to the front plan.
I see. Then we have more meetings or more workshops, okay?
So, uh. But we did that, we did these meetings before with the town center.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, that's, that's what I thought most.
But it might be us being at the farmer's market, and I don't, I don't know when we're going to, I, I think that was my question. Here, we're following the consultant's lead, it's just showing up wherever they are, or are we also having other activities beyond what they're?
Could be both, but I think you, you, you might have activities beyond, you know, they, they set you up and say, you know, go forth, you could go have a house meeting. With this, here, here's your board, here's your, you know, you're going to be described, you're going to be presented. They've done that in the past, but I don't know what's going to be, comes out of it, that's what I was just trying to capture, we're a host.
Okay, so maybe we just strike it in and just say host public engagement?
Yeah.
How I see this is that we really are the face of the comp plan or of things, right? And we're accountable for it, we're accountable for it being accomplished, right?
Okay, perfect, so we'll have to have some conversation once we know the plan.
Uh, and I, quickly, is the, yeah, are there like problems with the, the, all this meeting beyond five within this case or like?
There's only a problem that's, you know, if you're going to, and all be here, and you're going to, uh, then we probably need to declare a special meeting. We just need to go through our, our steps, uh. Just like the council does. Um, if there's going to be, um, anytime there's more than two, I'd say, she'd say this could be some kind of subcommittee meeting. We should know, right, just to be on the safe side.
Once we have the, the consultant scheduled then of those sorts of activities, obviously there would be a plan. Maybe then we can talk about which of those things more than two of us would go to and. And then coordinate with you just so we get our eyes dotted with these plus.
Yeah, we'll, we'll work out a whole schedule, I can do that.
We're done.
Okay, yeah, so, so no, uh, we're going to go a hundred percent, uh, no additional bullets beyond the five that are there, and no second item.
It would be great to have a motion to accept both our work plan and our, our twenty twenty-two, uh, report and our twenty twenty-three work plan. Um, as amended, uh, for. A motion for that.
Can I have one more amendment? Probably should have mentioned this like seven months ago, but my last name's Albert. My husband pointed that out.
I moved to.
Uh, M C C A R T N E Y. Same. Thank you. Um, with that, I would move to. Move to approve as presented, uh, not as presented with the edits.
I second the, the motion to accept the work plan. The report as well as the work plan.
That's a good standard, doesn't it? I say, yeah, all of us in favor, I say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Seen none, that passes, great. Um, how about new, uh, new business, no, we did new business reports and announcements?
Um, if someone you weren't here, we we have a new, we have a city arbers now. Great, and she, right after she started, and I was excited about it, she got sick and she basically out for two weeks of vacation and and recovery. So now we're really feeling the city arbers. She's, it's, 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 it's all cylinders now, so really happy. Pretty this hand up. One sec, one sec, thank you, Nick. All right. That's it.
That's great. Welcome, Hannah, if you ever watch this video, we're so excited. Okay, any additional citizens' comments online or?
Leanne? Yeah, no, my question got answered. It was really just, was there a unknown timeline for selecting the consultants and for their? Their project in in handling this, but that was all addressed.
Thank you. Um. So did you set out a draft?
You are, so, so who you are?
Oh, great. I'm Ethan Azzo, and I'm based here. Come sit in. And when you guys were going over your material, was that a separate draft that you sent out to Steve or was that online somewhere?
It was both. I sent it, I emailed it to the planning commissioners, but this document you have in your hand was posted. So that's got, doesn't have every single thing that they've been talking about, because everybody's been looking at the copy of the content, but that's, that's available to me. Let's see the memo. In in that package, there's a link to the top plan.
Okay, is that where all the team? Is part of it?
Yeah.
Good, thank you. And then, Nick, did you get Leanne's information we did ask her to provide her?
I did get her name in the beginning, yes, thank you.
I think that's kind of.
Well, just additional public comment, and we got.
Okay, online, do we have anyone online that was?
Any one person online? You know, if you want to raise your hand, Mr. P. Certainly, we'd love you to talk.
We'd love to hear from you.
Long say hi.
Yay.
Don's here.
I don't know if he's either.
Oh, he probably said. Darn it, there were cookies in it, read on. Now I can make good on that.
So it's been an interesting evening. I'll probably have some comments at a later date.
Well, first of all.
But we'll, we'll look forward to it, Don. Okay, and don't forget, everybody, we have two seats to fill. On our commission, and so we're still looking for applications. And so please make sure we get those right away to Steve, so we can get those seats filled. Um, and then, Jennifer, next lady.
We're the same.
We're the same. All right. Uh, I, that's all I have. Does anybody else have anything before we?
Or Lisa, yes, she was just looking at focusing on parks again, just so that we get all of the, I like that, I don't know.
Parts.
Parts that you have solidly on.
Yeah, I I would love for you to at least to look at the land you sold them next time. And then there's somebody who's got a passion for another. We probably cover more, I mean, why don't we see, starting with land use, to see how? Much we can get, you know, if we can get land use, environmental quality, housing. Then. Then we'll catch the rest of it.
Yeah, if you try to play questions you have with those, or, you know, that that kind of thinking and documentation that we do now off office so much, wants consultants in the room. So. Okay, so we would consider this land.
Land use, environment, doll, the house. First, first three.
Good main mention too about having maybe one or two representatives from the commission on our. Selection committee, that's something to identify the next.
Not necessarily, I'm probably going to the mayor to to ask. The point. Here, and so. And and the, and of course, there are the council deputy mayor, probably a forty council. We are, we don't, we don't have to have a contest.
In terms of hospital next time, I I think one of the things, if any of you find it valuable to learn a little bit more about. Housing needs assessment, like what it covers, what it doesn't, so that we can start thinking about questions when we talk about housing, or is that valuable? Like, that's just something that's been bouncing around in my head.
I mean, I certainly can try and flesh out what I, what I think we'll be looking for. Yeah, and so you see, you have a better feeling.
So if we, that's one thing that was missing for some of our council, and we were learning background information as we were trying to give feedback to consultants. So I'm trying to think about. All the kind of work we can do now to think about, what don't we know that would be helpful? As we try to answer their question, is this a good policy or? Well, sure. Yeah. As we're reading things, like, oh, wait, what are, what is the new baseline number, what is driving our economy here, whatever? That that's, I think, hopefully keep tracking. All right, with that.
And we'll just think, the videos, the the link that he sent for the videos, really useful, right? That's, that's another resource that I.
Yeah. Agreed. Okay.
Do we have a chance to look at any of those? See David or?
I was just a little bit overwhelmed as I started going through them, thinking, wow.
For the train.
But, yeah. Short course.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, thanks for sending that all. Made a really fun flight home.
Would you like to motion a fan here?
I always want a motion. Motion to a jury. Second.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor, I. All those opposed. Thank you, councilmember Bodie, thank you, Miss Mary, thank you, Meredith.
Thank you all for a good meeting, and I will see you in person next time.
Say, good night.
Good night.